The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please... If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the city council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hunt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Council Liaison Acosta.
Here.
And Council Liaison Gatrist.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of December 12th, 2017. The first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation regarding the mayor and council's Young Artists Program. There's a lot of people in our audience, I'm very happy to see, who are here for the Young Artists Program. I'm gonna just read a little bit about the description of this program, and then our two council youth liaisons are going to come down into the front of the podium here and give awards. I strongly believe that a city is not complete without a strong sense of the arts. Public art displays, performances, and our access to them is one of the many attributes that gives us our outstanding quality of life in Peoria and draws people to our great city. In addition, it's a characteristic that we are able to boast to business leaders who are looking for a new community to open or expand their company. The purpose of this program is to engage Peoria students interested in the arts and incorporate this art into Peoria City Hall. The entrees were collected by Peoria Unified School District teachers, who then selected their top entrees for submission to the City of Peoria. We will be recognizing these students tonight for their outstanding submissions. The commissioned art pieces have been proudly on display in City Hall Pine Room since November 1st and will be given back to the students this evening. At this time, I'd like our council youth liaisons, Ms. Gatrist and Ms. Acosta, to go to the floor to present each of the certificates. These are the City of Peoria Council Youth Liaisons. They were actually... They actually are a part of our discussion and debate on the dais here. We are proud to have them with us this evening.
Thank you again to each of the students who have participated in the mayor and council's Young Artists Program. At this time, we will be calling students in groups based on schools. When you hear your name, please come down to receive your certificate and stand for a group photo. From Altaloma Elementary School, Sierra Franco, Giselo Choa, Ray Ali Smith, and Myra Gonzalez.
I would like to remind you that in addition to the photo that is being taken here, you are on television. So, the camera is right up there, straight in front of you, and you can watch yourself on Channel 11.
But no pressure.
From Cheyenne Elementary School, Ariana Vias, Eunice Ibada, and Destiny Bright. From Coyote Hills Elementary School, Nora Brooks, Emily Foster, and Kaitlyn Taylor. From Cottonville Elementary School, Sarah Allen and Kaitlyn Trouble. From Desert Harbor Elementary School, Lexus Corpus, Hudson Ostley, and Harley Park.
I didn't get to talk to him.
I gotta get a shirt like that.
That's pretty cool. Cotton? Cottonmaw?
From Ira Murphy Elementary School, Noel Ingram, Eliana Quintana, and Caesar Celicero. From Lake Pleasant Elementary School, Charlotte Schott, Kendall Black, and Carly Brooks. From Oakwood Elementary School, Taylor Martin, Bennett Russell, and Michaela Hicks. From Oasis Elementary School, Emily Conklin, Kelly Peach, and Serenity Anchenato. Thank you all once again for participating in this program.
Thank you so much, all of you, kids and parents, for all of your support for these great kids. We really appreciate you participating in the program. Alright, we will now move on to our next item on the agenda. This is a presentation by our city manager, Mr. Jeff Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And as you know, we had a vacancy in one of our executive positions. There was a recruitment, a national recruitment, for our deputy city manager position. That oversees a number of city operations and works closely with our executive team, with department directors, and the city council. And after a competitive process, the city selected Eric Strunk for this important position. And Mr. Strunk is in the audience. He has more than 25 years of experience in Arizona local government. He's been a longtime employee at the City of Glendale, serving much of that time in director-level positions. Eric was also a chief architect of their neighborhood services and function, and oversaw parks, recreation, library, housing, arts functions, among other activities. Eric has received his bachelor's degree from the University of Colorado and his master's degree in public administration from Bowling Green University, the Fighting Falcons, I believe. In addition, Eric has been active in citizen engagement initiatives, works with boards and commissions, oversaw numerous initiatives and projects. But anyone that has spent time with Eric knows that he quickly, you can see, his passion for public service, an engaging personality, and a very positive perspective. So, we're very excited to have Eric join the team here at the City of Peoria.
That's wonderful. Well, Mr. Strunk, we would be happy to have you come and say a few words. We are so happy to have you here. Welcome to the City of Peoria.
Excuse me, I think my first act was everyone walked out on me here, so... Mayor, council, Jeff, Mr. Tyne, thank you for the very warm welcome. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to come and visit a little bit, to meet some of the staff. And I can tell you, I am very excited and thrilled to be onboarding here very, very soon. I think it's the first part of next year. I think Peoria is a wonderful place. You have wonderful staff, and I think you've got a great community. So, I'm looking forward to being here, and thank you so much for the opportunity to say hello to you all. Appreciate it.
Well, hello back at ya. Thank you so much for coming tonight, and again, welcome to Peoria. Okay, we will move on now to our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there is any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from the consent agenda and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public that would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda? Seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Mayor, I'd like to have 8C removed for a presentation, please.
Item 8C, thank you. And do I have a motion on consent with the exception of item 8C?
Still moved, second.
Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now ask for a presentation on item 8C. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And Assistant City Engineer Dan Neeson will provide a presentation for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have a very short presentation for you this evening. As the mayor just read, the item before you is a recommendation to approve an intergovernmental agreement with McDOT for construction of two traffic signals. And the agreement will identify the cost-sharing, design, and construction responsibilities for each agency. The first location of the first traffic signal will be Deer Valley Road and 87th Avenue. The existing intersection is a four-way intersection. The north leg of the intersection is in county jurisdiction, which prompted the need for the agreement. The other three legs are in city jurisdiction. The scope of the project includes design and construction of a new traffic signal and acquisition of new right-of-way. The project status right now is the design is at 30%. Our preliminary design has indicated that the existing or the proposed traffic signal equipment will fit within the existing right-of-way. So, we're hoping at this point that we will not have to acquire any right-of-way. In addition, we've started negotiating with one of our traffic signal contractors for a construction contract. Our schedule for this project, if no right-of-way is required, is to have the signal constructed, energized, and operational by July 31st of 2018. The second location is Vistancia Boulevard and Happy Valley Road intersection. It is currently a three-way intersection. The west leg of the intersection is Maricopa County jurisdiction, which is Happy Valley Road. The other two legs of the intersection are city jurisdiction. The scope of the project, again, includes design and construction of a new traffic signal, right-of-way acquisition, and modification of the two existing handicap ramps at the northwest and southwest corners of the intersection. The project status right now is at 30% design. We have not, at this point, made a final determination whether additional right-of-way is required at this intersection. We're still working through that process. We are also negotiating with our construction contractor for a construction contract. And our schedule for this traffic signal, if no right-of-way is required, is to have the signal constructed, energized, and operational by December 31st of 2018. I should make that clear. The last slide that I have is a summary of some of the additional terms of the agreement, and I'll go through those very quickly. Under city responsibility, the city is the lead agency. So, we've been the lead on the selection of the consultant and are taking the lead on the design, and we will take the lead on the construction of the two signals. All the improvements will be designed and constructed to city standards, and the city will be responsible to assume operation and maintenance responsibilities of the two signals. City is responsible to invoice the county for one quarter of the design and construction costs, and the city's estimated share of the project is $582,000. Under county responsibilities, the county has been participating in the selection of the consultant process and also through the design phase. They will also issue no-cost permits to the city, assistant right-of-way acquisition that may have to occur within county jurisdiction. They will reimburse the city, and their estimated share is $195,000. That concludes my short presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Vice Mayor?
I really don't have any questions. I just have a comment, Dan. I just want to thank you and your staff working with the county. Both of these intersections are extremely important to the residents, and I know that the traffic in those areas has justified the need for these signals. And I know for the one on Deer Valley, I think it's a long time in coming. And I know that the residents in that area really appreciate the work that you guys are doing to get that signal energized as quickly as possible. So, I just want to thank you and your staff, along with the county representatives, for good work on both of these locations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, yes.
Alright, so apart from just making it easier for traffic, and obviously, the residents are very happy to have that this into place, but is there, like, any problems? Like, has there been any, like, a vast amount of car accidents that have been occurring on these intersections? Or is it just convenience?
At 87th and Deer Valley, we have had some accidents. I believe we had a fatality a few years ago. And at Vistancia and Happy Valley, the county had received a number of complaints about traffic from Happy Valley accessing northbound onto Vistancia Boulevard. They couldn't get a gap in traffic. So, the county conducted a warrant analysis to see if the intersection met warrants for a signal. Once they determined that, yes, it did, they approached the city with their findings. The city staff reviewed their warrant analysis and agreed with their findings.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that. That was a very good question. Alright, do we have a motion on item 8C?
Second.
A motion and a second. Council, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, we will now move on to new business. Item 16R has been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to item 17R. This is a public hearing, rezoning Metzger Residence, 7423 West Wowell Road. Mr. Tyne, could we have a staff report, please?
Great, thank you. And the Planning Director, Chris Hockes, will provide a presentation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and council. Item 17R, this is a proposed rezone for a lot located at near 75th and Jomax. It's identified on red on the screen. You can get a relative idea of the location of that area. It's near future community of Alora Vita, near or surrounded by Teramar and into the northwest to Rock Springs. This is just a more specific look into the property location. The lot is approximately one acre in size. There are some vacant properties that are situated between this one and Jomax Road, and as indicated, Teramar to the west and to the south of the development. In this case, the homeowner, Mr. Metzger, is also the applicant. The request is to rezone the property from Suburban Ranch, which is a semi-rural zoning district, one acre minimum lot size, to a single-family district, R135. 35 means 35,000 square feet, or about 80% of an acre, so it's nearly an acre. I should indicate that there's no associated development proposal. There's no lot split that's contemplated and associated with this. The purpose of the rezone is to have more favorable development standards, so as the property owner continues to improve their property, they have more favorable standards that really are more in line with the suburban, the residential community to the west and south of them. Okay, the graphic on the left, that's the general plan land use map. The areas in green are... It's a park open space designation, and that's what the property happens to be designated. I'll indicate that the, you know, through our general plan update, we're gonna correct some of these anomalies. You'll notice that the park open space also is situated over some subdivisions, so we're gonna correct that. Typically, park open space is along wash corridors. It includes sensitive areas, hillside areas. That's the purpose of that designation. Nonetheless, it has a maximum density of one dwelling per acre, which is what this property is and will continue to be. On the right, I'll direct your attention to the zoning map. The property, as indicated, is zoned SR 43, Suburban Ranch 43. Properties to the west in Teramar and to the south, R18, 8,000 square foot lots. And then to the east, a small little community there, R112, 12,000 square foot lots. This is the aerial view of the property in question. You can see it's situated with a single-family home there. There is a access easement that brings access to this property along the northern portion of the property that then goes out to Jomax Road. As I indicated earlier, there is no associated development with this proposal. As I'll show you on the next slide, there's an interest in more favorable development standards. So, if we can take a look at that, the column in the middle, that's the proposed zoning district. The column to the left, that's the existing zoning district. So, what I try to do is highlight in red where some of those more favorable standards are. So, with this, you know, the bottom line is what this would allow the homeowner to do would have 30-foot front setbacks instead of 40, 10-foot side setbacks instead of 20. So, allows a little bit more flexibility on the lot. It'll still be more restrictive than the Teramar portions to the west and south, and it will comply with the general plan, which says no more than one lot per acre. Okay, in terms of public outreach, as you know with our zoning process, we do require neighborhood meetings. We do send out notification to all properties within a 600-foot radius and all registered HOAs within a one-mile radius. So, throughout the project review, we have not received any correspondence in support or opposition. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on October 3rd, and no members of the public attended that neighborhood meeting. We held a planning, we held a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission that was held on November 16th. We did not have any speakers from the general public in attendance, and after deliberation, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously to approve the case. Key findings, as indicated, the rezone, it would conform to the general plan park open space designation, and the new development standards are more closely aligned with the adjacent development to the west and south. And with that, the recommendation is to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone the property from Suburban Ranch to single-family residential R135. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hockes? Alright, this is a public meeting. I declare this public meeting open. Is there any members of the public who would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, any further discussion? Do we have a motion on item 17R?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is 18R, Memorandum of Understanding, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 3282, July 2018 through June 2022. Staff report, Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And Laura Engineering, our Human Resources Director, will provide a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and council. Joining me tonight is DeeDee Gates, who is our lead negotiator and HR manager for the city, and Eric McMorrow, who is representing AFSMI. And we're excited to share with you tonight that AFSMI and the city have come to agreement on the next memorandum of understanding. AFSMI, of course, is the American Federation for State, County, and Municipal Employees, and they represent a little over 450 of our classifications here at Peoria. A wide range, here's a sample of some of the classifications that are represented. Automotive technician, lead equipment operator, code compliance officer, communications specialist, also known as the 9/11 operator, 911 operator. So, you can see a wide variety. We have a memorandum of understanding with AFSMI that expires June of 2018. So, in accordance with city code, we started negotiations in September. Before I cover the key provisions of the MOU, I want to talk a little bit about the process that we used. We have an excellent relationship with AFSMI, like we do with all the employee groups, and we feel that that... and we feel that that excellent relationship helps us succeed with the city's vision and goals and objectives. We also think it's important, from an HR perspective, that we maintain our employer of choice status, and we know that a competitive compensation and benefits package helps us maintain that, that employer of choice status. So those two things we kept into consideration when we began the negotiations process. We started with a market wage and benefit study. So we surveyed 12 different cities, and we asked them about their salary ranges and their different benefits. And then we compiled all that information and provided it to AFSMI. And then the formal negotiations began at the table on September 19th, and last week we were notified by AFSMI on December 7th that their membership had ratified the proposed We used the meet and confer process consistent with other processes and consistent with the city code. Meetings were held on a weekly basis to discuss various ideas and different concepts, recognizing that we do have a diverse group of represented employees in AFSMI. And we're pleased to say that AFSMI representatives demonstrated really a sincere desire to serve their members and to serve the city, and we were pleased to see that. I want to acknowledge the negotiators. On the AFSMI side, Walter Crenshaw, who is the AFSMI President, wasn't able to be here tonight. He was the Lead Negotiator. Eric McMorrow, who is here tonight. Dennis Whitney and Tom Davis. And then on the city side, DeeDee Gates, our Lead Negotiator, and the consultants, Camille Russell and Claudia Hasbrook, who I believe are also in the audience. All of them contributed a lot to this negotiation process. But I also want to acknowledge, like I have in the past, that this is a team effort. They do a lot of work at the table, and I absolutely acknowledge that and I appreciate that. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work done as well. Christine Nickel, who's in the audience, and Stacy Oliver are the ones that are in the, behind the scenes, casting all the different options out. So it truly is the entire HR department contributing to this. All right. So here are some of the key provisions of this proposed memorandum of understanding. First, it's a four-year contract. We're very pleased with that, so it will begin July of 2018. The first year, every employee covered under AFSMI will receive a cost of living adjustment of 2%. And then those that are within the salary range, so remember there's a minimum and a maximum, will receive a 2.5% merit increase if they're eligible. If they're at the maximum of the range, they will not receive that 2.5%, they'll only receive the COLA. But if they're, if in that range, they'll receive the COLA and the merit increase. So a total of a 4.5% increase for the first year. The second year, 3% merit increase for everyone that's within that range and eligible. And then those that are not within that range, so at the top of the range, they'll receive a $1,200 lump sum. And then year three is exactly like year one, so another COLA and a 2.5% merit increase. And then year four is exactly like year two, so a 3% merit plus 1,200 lump sum. We've also changed a little bit of the sick leave payout in this proposed MOU. There are two opportunities for their sick leave to be paid out. One is annually and one is upon retirement. And you may recall that our employees receive eight hours of sick leave per month. And annually, if AFSMI members reach a balance of 1,040, then they can be paid anything over that on an annual basis. We did not change that part of the MOU. We only changed the part that puts that into the retiree health savings account. Previously, they were paid for that. Now it's going into retiree health savings account to help them prepare for their retirement. And then the payout upon retirement has changed a little bit, and you may recall this is very similar to what we did with PPOA MOU. Currently, if they have at least 200 hours of sick leave upon retirement, they get 50% payout. This changes it a little bit, so if you have less than 500 hours of sick leave upon retirement, you only get 25%. If you have more than 900 hours, you get 75%. And that also is placed in the retiree health savings account. This encourages employees to use sick leave for the purpose that it's intended is, and when they're sick. And if they're not sick, not use it, then they can accumulate a bigger balance and receive that payout upon retirement. We've also included some range adjustments in this MOU. When we did the market study before negotiations began, we found that there were at least three classifications that we felt needed to be adjusted, and that was based on what the other cities were paying and their salary range. And so we began negotiations with, with that thought in mind, those three positions, and it's code compliance officer, communications specialist, 911 operator, and custodian. And we recommended that the range be adjusted for those three classifications. During negotiations, they also requested that the judicial assistant be adjusted as well, so that's included in the memorandum of understanding. I have some specifics on those positions, if you'd like them. For example, code compliance officer, there's seven total positions that are impacted, three of which will receive an increase. So they'll only receive an increase if they're at the minimum of the range when we move the, the range. For the communications specialist, 26 positions, 14 of them will receive an average increase of about 6.6%. Custodian, six of them, an average of 2.1%. And judicial assistant, one of them will receive a 2.5%. That's in addition to what I already mentioned about the COLA and the merit increases. So this will be, be a good increase for these positions. And currently, we contribute to the 457 Plan for AFSMI employees. We contribute 15 if they contribute 15. This MOU increases that. So the second year of the contract, if they contribute 25, we will match that 25. And the fourth year of the contract, if they contribute 35, we will match that at 35. Again, trying to help our employees prepare for retirement. So Mayor and Counsel, in the last 15 months, we've completed four negotiations processes with all four of our employer organizations. And each of these processes, I have to say, went relatively smooth. I mean, not perfect, but relatively smooth, all in all. And I have to thank all of you and the HR staff, DeeDee, the representatives, the city manager. This was truly a team effort to make this happen as well as it did happen, and I think it strengthens, strengthens our relationships with these employer organizations as a result of these processes. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of where we're at and where we're going next. We are now done for two years. The next one will be PFFA, because their contract expires June 30th of 2020. So in September of 2019, we'll start again with PFFA, then the next year, COPSS and PPOA, and then AFSMI again. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Counsel member Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo my comments a couple weeks ago about the PPOA, that these negotiations appeared to be done in the spirit of cooperation, and that, we appreciate that very much. As Laura and DeeDee were bringing this, this contract back and forth to our counsel, we reviewed it and approved it, and our desire, again, is to make Peoria and keep Peoria an employer of choice, and I think we have achieved that goal. Congratulations to you, Eric, and your team, and to you, Laura and DeeDee, with your team on all your hard work. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth Counsel liaison Acosta?
I'm sorry. I, can you go back to the...
No need to apologize.
Can you go back to the retirement plan slide, please? So what did you say the numbers were before, the hours and the percentages?
On the retirement payout?
Yes.
Currently, if they have more than 200 hours when they retire, so they get eight hours of sick leave per month for as long as they're employed, if they have more than 200 hours and they get 50% payout upon retirement. This changes it so that if they have less than 500, they only get 25% of that leave balance, and more than 900 hours, they get 75% pay.
Okay. All right. It's just, yeah, I just wanted to review that, just because my mom, when she had cancer, she had to take a lot of sick leave, so I was double checking. Anyways, thank you.
It's much better for the city and that it's more consistent for the rest of the movement. It's easier for HR to keep track of it, all on the same page. So it's much better for the city.
Okay.
And it works too, because it benefits everybody.
Counsel, any further comments?
Um, this, the slide, two slides back, please. There you go. And so these range adjustments, I was really pleased to see this. I know that, that there are times when we get out of sync with other cities or the valley as a whole. You know, sometimes other cities have increases or, you know, adjustments in these, in certain job classifications. And that happened in particular, I'm thinking of the 911 dispatch operators. And so I really appreciate AFSMI working with our HR department to make sure that we got those back in line. You know, that's going to happen frequently and regularly, and so just to make sure that we, that we pull all of that together during this time of negotiations is really, really important. We want to make sure that we are an employer of choice, and we want to make sure that everybody is paid fairly for the job that they do. And these jobs are all, every one of them are very, very important. So I also want to thank all of you, all of your negotiating team at AFSMI and HR, DeeDee especially. I mean, you guys did a tremendous job of being reasonable and rational and just working together for the greater good, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that on behalf of the citizens of Peoria. So thank you for coming up with something that is fair and workable, and we're very pleased to be able to vote on that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Counsel member Hunt?
I guess I want to add my thanks also, and you did several. You did, what, four in 15 months? That's a lot. And it shouldn't be overlooked either, that it's a lot for the unions to prepare. And I remember for many, many years, especially before coming to Peoria, this type of thing was always approached as an adversarial situation. It was them against us, and we got to see how much we can get, and we got to see how much we can keep them from getting. And since I've been here, but especially the last few years, it just has not been that way. We want to do what we can. Obviously, we don't have all the money in the world, or we'd give it to our employees, but what we can do legally and within what we have, we want to give our employees, whether it's police, fire, or AFSMI. We want to do that, and I think, congratulations to you two for personifying that attitude. And I want to say, you're not all up here tonight, but for Eric and, and for the police and the fire representatives, thank you for coming too with an attitude of, we want to work with you. We don't want to be mad at you. We don't want to fight with you. We are representing our people. And I know as a counsel, it makes it really a lot more pleasant for us, and I think it's a win-win for everybody. So thank you all just for your attitude in coming into this.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 19R, Public Art, Happy Valley Road and Lake Pleasant Parkway. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you. And we have John Sefton, our Community Services Director, as well as Mary Lou Stevens, our Arts and Theater Manager, that will offer a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Tyne, and good evening, Mayor and Counsel. For your next action item, we present for your consideration the placement and contract for Peoria's next public art installation. Joining me tonight is Mary Lou Stevens, Arts and Theater Manager, who started exactly one year ago today. So depending upon the outcome of tonight, her probationary period may be fruitful, or I'm sure it'll be great. Don't worry. Also in the audience is Robert Panzer, Arts Commissioner and Director of Arts for Education at Peoria Unified School District. Our new arts coordinator, Susan Hardeman, and I'd also like to recognize Andre Locardi and his contributions to the dedication of this process. How's that for a great logo? In 1987, the then Mayor and Counsel set into policy the Public Arts Fund and the 1% for the arts program. This dedicated arts funding source is just one element that helps to articulate and accentuate Peoria's creative community and quality of life. For the past 30 years, Peoria has been intentional in defining how just even 1% of the city's capital project funding can have a daily positive impact on the people of our community. Peoria's public art collection now holds 111 pieces of artwork, including 19 large-scale installations and murals, and a diverse mix of drawings, paintings, sculptures, ceramics, photographs, and mixed media. Arts installations are located as far south as Pioneer Park and as far north as Fire Station 197 on Joe Max Road. And in between, Peoria's collection is integral to the City Hall Campus and many of our public parks. The Rio Vista Recreation Center and Happy Valley Road are grand stages for this creativity, inspiration, and imagination. Now, the site selection for public art is a rather arduous one. Beyond just land ownership, a cross-functional staff team reviews the issues of traffic control, utility easements, public safety, visibility, and accessibility, all before moving on to an art selection. In April of this year, you approved an easement agreement with Cypress Lake Pleasant. This agreement defines a myriad of protocol and requirements for the installation of public art on the private property located at the northeast corner of Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway. Now, initially, our intent was to leverage the call to artists and also seek proposals for this location and 83rd Avenue and Happy Valley, but I want to be clear, tonight, we are only looking at this location at Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant. It was the panel and the Arts Commission that felt that there was some further work that needs to be done on that other corner at 83rd Avenue, and with future development in that area, we're not bringing that one forward at this time. So I will ask Mary Lou to speak to the art selection process and the public engagement efforts.
So this process started back in June? When we, hello. Started back in June when we put together our Call to Artists, and this year, we did use a new platform called CallForEntry.org or Cafe. It is run through a company called Weststaff, and this program really allowed us to reach artists literally around the world, and it brought us an unprecedented, unprecedented number of artist applications, 292 to be exact, which is extraordinary. And you can imagine that it takes quite some time to go through 292 artist applications. However, we had a really incredible team that came together to work on that. They had from July 10th to the 19th to review those applications, and then on July 19th, they came together to work on creating their consensus. These are the people that were on our public art review panel, and Robert Panzer is here with us tonight. He was the Arts Commissioner that also presented the art review panel's findings and recommendation to the Arts Commission. We also had Courtney Carvas, who is part of the team at Cypress Lake Pleasant that manages the facility at the area that we will be putting the artwork in, and she was very invaluable in giving us a very keen perspective. Kathy Cameron is a Peoria resident, Grata Hall, also a Peoria resident and business owner, and she brought some wonderful perspective with her environmental quality specialist role. And Nathaniel Washburn, also a Peoria resident and City of Peoria employee. We also had the Arts Commission involved, and we made sure that we had two Arts Commissions meetings to go over the proposal with the people you see on this slide. Robert was gracious enough to present the findings from the Arts Panel on October 10th and November 14th, which was after we had the public meeting on September 20th for the artist finalists to present. We brought it down to three finalists, and those three finalists, for each of the presentations, were able to present their artwork on September 20th. From there, we made sure that we involved the public. So in August, we sent out a postcard that detailed this process, and here's a copy of our lovely postcard. This really detailed everything that would be happening with the presentations, as well as the Arts Commission meetings, and we expanded the number of postcards we normally send out to a three-mile radius and 18,000 residents to make sure that we were getting a widespread audience. We also had the public meeting on September 20th, which was held at Copper Hills Church to make sure it was in a north area, so it would be convenient to the residents in the area. And then we publicized the three finalists' proposals on the city website, including a video of the live presentations with opportunity for direct feedback from the public. We also had great help from... had great help from the Office of Communications. They made sure to get a press release out. And also, we were featured on the front page of the Peoria Times, which gets a lot of input from our residents. We also had posts on Facebook and Twitter. And our Facebook post received, it was reached by over 1,300 residents and had 88 clicks. So we had a lot of engagement on that, as well as Twitter. And we also set up an Arts Commission table at the Old Town Holiday Festival that just recently happened, to make sure that we can engage with the public that was at that event. And many of the comments were actually positive on all three of the finalists, but definitely had one that was far and away the favorite. So to go over the rankings, the Arts Panel ranking is before you with their scoring and some of their comments. Jeff Zyschki's piece came out on top. Gordon Huthar and Blessing Hancock were fairly close to one another, but definitely a second and third place in terms of their scoring. So the recommendation of the Arts Panel that went to the Arts Commission was definitely Jeff Zyschki. And then we had a public ranking from our website. And these were the rankings, again, in the same order with Jeff also coming out on top. Blessing actually coming in in second place with votes, and Gordon's piece coming in third place. And with that, we are fairly confident that Blooming Spire came out on top in terms of the piece that the public and our panel and our Arts Commission was most interested in seeing being the recommendation. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our local Arizona artist out of 292 applications, Jeff Zyschki. I'm going to have him come up to the podium. And we're going to show you a couple of slides that feature his artwork. And he can walk you through some of his inspiration for the piece.
Okay. Tough competition. What do you want me to do here? I'm sorry.
Offer your inspiration.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor and the council and the panel, Artist Panel. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this community's development. There is no greater honor for an artist than to be asked to create a new visual experience that complements the natural beauty of a specific location, remind us or inform others of our cultural identity, and inspire awe and hope for the future. Throughout my career, I've been fortunate to work on meaningful projects around the world, rural France, Italy, Michigan, and the West Coast. But there's no greater joy than to work on projects here in Arizona, where I've been blessed to live for 30 years. Without question, my daily walks in the surrounding foothills have not only forged and reinforced a great love for the desert landscape, but also helped me find ways to capture and express qualities like shape, scale, light, and shadows in my work. If you look at some of my past works I've done here locally, I have strived to offer works that offer interpretations and extensions of the natural beauty that has been here for centuries. And so for this project opportunity, my thoughts streamed to developing a signature piece of art that would not only complement the local landscape, but which would capture the warmth, optimism, and bold vision of the people of Peoria and serve as a beacon for its future. Voila.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do you want me to describe those slides?
And this, yeah, this last one with the light, I think, is an important element.
Yeah. So during the day, the blooms will illuminate naturally from the strong light that we have here. But at night, they'll be computer-controlled and totally adjustable for any kind of special event, whatever that might be. It might be a holiday, it might be something that's special for Peoria. But the lights can be computer-controlled to be a million different kinds of things. But as I mentioned in my speech, I don't see it as an active thing that's going on every day. I kind of see it as a subtle sculpture that maybe one night, maybe every Friday night, it is, it changes from blue to green. Maybe on Sundays, and this is only for two hours or three hours. And maybe it's on, typically it might be just kind of a white light. But on special occasions, I want people to be enthralled. And did you see the lights on Friday night at midnight? You should have been there, you know? And that's what I'm going to try to achieve with the color there. So, working with lighting designer and with my computer guy, we'll come up with something that is very changeable, controllable, and exciting. So, yep.
Great. Thank you. And Mayor and Council, so we'll do our very best to answer any questions with Jeff here, Mary Lou and myself. This does come to you as a recommendation from staff, along with the Peoria Arts Commission and the Art Selection Panel. So with that, I'd be happy to engage your questions.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Hunt?
Wow. That's the best I can summarize this. This is amazing. And congratulations. And I just think it is really amazing that out of how many, 293, it came back to Arizona. From all over the world, it came back to someone who knows what he's doing in our Arizona desert. And I think this piece really shows that you do walk daily and that you do know this terrain. And I love what you said at the end. I was thinking it might get tiresome with all the lights, might look a little, I love it that it's going to be a surprise element when it's lit. And mostly, it's going to be very subtle. Like, it's kind of like the blossoms on a saguaro, or they're not there the whole time, but you know they're going to come. And they're amazing and breathtaking when they do come. And I think that's what you're going to have here. I just love it. And kudos to you guys. This couldn't have been any more vetted, I don't think. I don't know what else you would have done to get to this point. And I love the citizen input. That's important. It's their art. And they're the ones that are going to be looking at it. So, well, I just couldn't be happier.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Breathtaking. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of work. But I do have one concern. If you could bring back the slide of the daytime picture, right there. What's the accessibility for all residents to be able to come up and walk and be close to this? Because I don't see some kind of a pad around it or a walkway from the businesses so that people with handicap would be able to enjoy this. Is that something that we're planning on doing?
Yes. As a matter of fact, this piece, this is the artist rendering to put it in perspective and in terms of the shape and size. But we do have budget to make sure that we extend the pad from the shopping area and the restaurant behind it. And also, there will be some landscaping that will have to be adjusted in order to get to the piece. But that is something that we will work with the team on to make sure that it is accessible. Because we want people from the shopping center and the restaurant to be able to sit around and to enjoy it on that back patio.
Exactly. Great work. I mean, if you make those changes, it's kudos to everybody. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. And thank you for sharing your gift with our city. And this is very exciting for the Mesquite District. I have one question with regard to the lights and changing the lights and controlling the lights. Who's in control of that? Who does it? And when is it done?
Very good question. There are several ways to approach that. And number one, there would be one master controller that one person has a key to. And I kind of picture that, number one, the physical computer with the program would be in one of the, either closet or a separate building, I mean, in the building or in a little alcove that's one of those shops, okay? And it could be that there are like 10 presets or five presets. And I think we need to talk about that, what you want to do. So like, number one could be red to orange. It could be the solid red. Number two, it could be green to blue. Number five could be the wow, that goes all these crazy colors and live like this. So then, we have to talk, I'm not sure who actually would be in charge of that. I can set it up with a global clock that if everybody says, okay, let's have every Friday be this color and have every time do this, then I can set it up and it'll come, it'll start exactly at 5 o'clock, it'll end at whenever we want it to, 11 o'clock. And then on Friday, it'll be this color, and Thursday, it'll be this, it'll be that. That is some discussion we'd have to have. It certainly wouldn't be arbitrary. But in the future, you could just say, we'd like to have this special event. Could you do it? I would be happy to come down and do that.
So, yet to be determined.
Yeah, it really is.
Mayor, Councilmember Binsbacher, yes. So, yet to be determined, but definitely a logistic that's easy to figure out in utilizing both the Arts Commission, you as Mayor and Council, the feedback from the community. I think that there are some, you know, really, from Jeff's inspiration, we have the opportunity to continue the engagement, if you will, in the creation of this art piece. And it will be over time. And, you know, seeing the purple lit up could, you know, hugely run with a theme that the city has adopted with this building here in City Hall. So there's a lot of things that can be very articulately displayed through this one piece. The logistics, we'll figure out. We have the technology, we have the wherewithal.
Thank you.
What is the timing on this?
So we have, obviously, there's the approval process. We have the budgets in this fiscal year. And we would, we have the agreement in place with the property owner. We have a lot of design work to do. So, as Andy Granger would say, soon, relatively speaking. But we'll get right to work if that is your direction.
Okay. Okay. Well, Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Well, yeah, John, you didn't really answer the question. How long does it take you? I mean, it was a good, you know, stall, but how long will, I mean, how could we not approve this? So from tonight, how long does it take you to make this masterpiece?
Well, I would say around six months.
Okay.
Yeah. If the permits go through and pouring the slab and the wiring and all that kind of stuff. And it would be, it wouldn't take very long to install because it would be built all off-site and brought there in a crane. In fact, I talked to, was it Andre?
Andre.
Yeah. About how we would access with a crane along that route. And that seemed straightforward. So it wasn't any big problems. And then also talk about which trees to remove. That's something, part of the city, how long that takes. But I'd say six months would be great. Perfect time, June, July, to install art in the desert. Why does that always happen?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. We are now moving on to the Vestancia Community Facilities District Board Meeting. This is the consent agenda, which consists of two items, the approval of the minutes from the November 28th meeting and the fiscal year 2017 annual financial report. Board members, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Board, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. Is your verbal, can you, can you just tell us your verbal vote? Yes. Thank you. Now it passes unanimously. All right. We will now move on to the Vestancia West Community Facilities District Board Meeting. This is also a consent agenda. It is the approval of the minutes from the November 7th meeting and the fiscal year 2017 annual financial report. Board members, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Board members, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. A few items that I wanted to go through today. Just quickly, one item was on the consent agenda. We did have the adoption of the city's comprehensive annual financial report, better known as our CAFER. This is the city's audited financial statements for the last fiscal year. And we wanted to just mention some acknowledgements. We again received a clean opinion from our auditors on that. And every year, we do submit that to the Government Finance Officers Association for their certificate. And this will be the 32nd year consecutively that we will receive the award, the certificate for excellence from that esteemed organization. It reflects really the quality of our accounting and financial reporting group. And I wanted to just acknowledge our accounting staff for that. Another item, just to mention with regard to our fire department, as we've all watched the news of our neighboring state, we've seen some rather tough images to watch in California with terrain that we see in some of the topography in northern Peoria. It's not too dissimilar from ours. Those types of fires are a sobering reminder for all of us of the importance of making sure that we are trained, prepared, and always vigilant. But it also, it's important to note that in addition, our own Peoria firefighters are also assisting again with this broader cause. And we've deployed four of our fire medical personnel to the wildland fires in California. They will be gone approximately two weeks. They were initially deployed in San Diego County and now have been deployed just today to Ventura County. They include Captain Kurt Walker, firefighter Josh Carpenter, firefighter Brad Wharton, and firefighter Brian Eskamio. One last item, a sad item we wanted to mention real quickly, was our condolences to the City of El Mirage and the El Mirage Police Department, who lost one of their officers in the line of duty today. And I wanted to acknowledge Chief Mentor and the Peoria Police Department, who is assisting the City of El Mirage right now, where we have two of our officers for every shift for the next day or two to assist with that city as they deal with this issue. Lastly, we wanted to provide, on a little more positive note, a video of a chilling special event that we have coming up, the Polar Plunge. So I believe we have something to air for that. Coming near us. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you very much. That was truly chilling. All right. Youth Council Liaison Acosta?
Okay. First, I would like to say congratulations to Jeff Zyschki, Zieschki, on his wonderful art piece. I know that I will enjoy viewing that once it's up and running. Congratulations to our new city deputy, Eric Strunk, right? We are happy for you being part of a team. And then congratulations to all our youth and their artwork and them being so talented with these things. Because I know myself, I still draw stick figures. So it's great to see the youth participating in the city like that. Just a few other things. Last week was kind of busy. The Cardinals hosted the Play 360 event, which is basically something to promote health and well-being within the youth. They had this event at the lawn of the Cardinal Stadium. And they had a bunch of, like, little boot camp type things. And our school went over there and we helped assist in that, helped the children be motivated and getting healthy and fit and active. We also hosted the Community Partnership Awards Ceremony last week. Ceremony last week. It was truly amazing to see all the partnerships that we have within the city, within our citizens, and outside the city, too. And we just took that night to recognize and award those people that are doing so much for everyone in the city and outside the city. And then we also had a lunch with a council member at my school, Centennial High School, and Vice Mayor Edwards attended there. It was around two hours, a two-hour lunch. But the youth and members from the board were there and participated, and we talked about problems that the youth are facing and solutions that we may have. But that is all that I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. December 1st, I attended the Old Town Festival in Old Town, Peoria. And like all of our special events, it was just a real fun time for everybody. It's always really nice to see a bunch of families coming together. It was very crowded, all kinds of events, bouncy houses, games for kids, food, just a real fun time for a lot of people, very crowded. On December 5th, I met with some consultants over at Sunrise Amont Library to discuss the future plans for Peoria. Apparently, they're doing a strategic plan for our libraries. And I can tell you this, in the next 10 to 15 years, the libraries are not going to be what they look like today. They're going to be completely different. And on December 7th, I attended the Police Community Partnership Awards hosted by the Peoria Police Department. And it was really great to see all the people from the community that helped the police out in so many ways. Meili Acosta actually received an award. There was one student there that he actually built a robotic arm. And I was talking to the vice mayor, and the vice mayor said, I, both of us feel like real underachievers when we're in an event like that. These kids are just brilliant. I want to say congratulations to Eric Strunk. Eric and I actually have known each other for several years. When I was working at the city, he was kind of my counterpart over in Glendale. Jeff, I think you hit a home run on this one. He's going to be great for our city, and welcome Eric. And last, to be real clear about something, I will not be participating, unlike our vice mayor, in the Polar Plunge. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. You're a very smart man. Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to welcome Mr. Strunk to the city of Peoria. Welcome, we're happy to have you. Don't take that mass exit personally. Also, I want to congratulate our youth, our Peoria young artists this evening for sharing their talents with us and making our city better. It's always wonderful to see these kids being creative. I want to express my gratitude to our Peoria firefighters and the hundreds of other firefighters that are out there helping with those California wildfires. And their families, too, because it's a big sacrifice for everyone. And of course, our condolences, my condolences, to the city of El Mirage and the family of the police officer that they lost today. There's no easy way to get through that process, but it's wonderful to see cities pulling together to help each other in times of need. Let's see, so much happening, but I'm going to highlight just a few. We had our first ever meet and greet out at Lake Pleasant on the 6th of December. And it was a fantastic event out at the lake. We brought in Marina businesses, some other Peoria businesses, some other stakeholders, the Maricopa Water District, CAP. We brought them together. And, you know, as we develop our city and grow our city and develop the lake, it's so important that we strengthen relationships and partnerships and work together. And that was the beginning of something great. I could really feel it in the energy there that day. And we brought in the Chamber of Commerce to speak to these businesses, and SBDC was there also to talk about what resources are available in the city of Peoria for our small businesses. And there's a lot more to come, and a lot more that we're going to be doing to support local businesses in the city of Peoria. But it was really exciting to pull in the Marina businesses and really focus on what's happening out at the lake, which is in the Mesquite District. And we had a fantastic turnout from police that day and fire. And I want to especially thank my assistant Irene Charlez and Kelly Kincaid from Community Services and her entire team for pulling all of that together. Again, more to come on that. I'm looking for great things there. On the 7th, I also attended the Community Partnership Awards, and it was fantastic. Chief Mentor and Jay Davies did a fantastic job recognizing some unbelievable students, but other citizens in the community that are really helping our police department to help our community and provide the best possible service that we can. It just makes everyone's job so much easier when we have eyes and ears out there, and we have kids putting forth effort and seniors putting forth effort. And also recognizing neighboring agencies. I believe it was Glendale and Surprise that were there that have worked with Peoria. And it's just wonderful to see that effort. And again, amazing contributions and accomplishments and achievements by some of these folks. And then on the 9th, Shop with a Cop. And I'm sure you might hear from other council members about Shop with a Cop, and the mayor, too, was there. Fantastic event, I think bigger than ever. Over 80, 80 children, I believe it was, that were represented there, that were paired up with a cop. And starting with breakfast at Chick-fil-A, and, you know, thank you Chick-fil-A for all you do for that event. And thank you to our cops, because on that day, there are, there's no titles, there's no ranks, there are just people there serving and affecting lives in a remarkable way. And it was just magical to see, and I was so proud. And I just loved being part of it. It was truly an honor. So great job to the Peoria Police Officers Association, all the officers that volunteered on their time to make that happen for these kids. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I went to most of the events that everybody's mentioned, so I won't bore with a lot of them. But Eric, I, too, want to thank, welcome you to the city of Peoria. But you're not getting a new job, you are joining a family, a committed family of dedicated people, men and women, that really enjoy, truly enjoy the work that they do. So I just want to welcome you to that family, to our family, on behalf of myself and the entire council. I did a lunch with a councilman over at Centennial High School. As Meili mentioned, we had about 20 youth that were able to attend. Councilman Finn wasn't able to attend due to a prior commitment. But the discussions ranged from public transportation to a lot of the issues with extracurricular activities at the schools. And it was supposed to be about an hour luncheon. It turned into a two-and-a-half-hour luncheon. And so we had to get permission from the principal to get them released from some of their classrooms, but he just didn't want it to end, and I don't think any of us did. So it was just, it was great brainstorming and coming up with some really nice ideas that I hopefully will be able to work on going in the future. I attended a teacher appreciation breakfast with Councilmember Binsbacher on the 8th over at Kandeo. It was just a great turnout. Thank you so much for inviting me. Served breakfast to all the teachers that were in attendance and got there pretty early. It was cold. It was very cold, but it was just so well appreciated and so received. So I want to thank you for that invitation. Made some great contacts. And finally, I want to wish everybody a happy holidays. I know that, you know, the holidays are upon us and we kind of get wrapped up in our normal world. But if you get a chance, if you're out in the mall or at some of the shopping institutions, if you get a chance to stop by a Christmas angel tree, I would highly welcome you to grab one of those names, because there's a lot of children out there that don't have Christmas like the rest of us. And so I have done this for years. I've taught my children how to do it at an early age, and now they're doing it on their own. So I just, it's a magical moment to go out and get one of those name tags and be able to surprise a child that may not think that he's going to get something, he or she is going to get something for Christmas. So with that, Mayor, I just want to wish all of us, all of you guys, a Merry Christmas, and all of the audience out there, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I will start with also welcoming Eric to the family. You've joined an amazing team. I'm sure you'll find that out very, very quickly. But it is an amazing team here at the city. And speaking of city, Mayor and I were kind of talking about how quick this year went. And looking back at all of the events, I attended the events that fellow council members have spoken about. You guys just do an amazing job every single time. It's just incredible, the community outreach and the way that you present the city and how well you represent all of us at these events. So I just wanted to thank you, everybody on the staff, for everything that you do out there. And I, of the events, I did want to just comment, I won't comment on them all, but the Shop with a Cop was just amazing. I agree, it was absolutely phenomenal. I happen to know at least one individual that was there that was reaping the benefits of shopping with a cop. And it was just so incredible to watch and see that happen. So thank you PPOA for that amazing event and what you guys do. I also want to remind citizens out there that it is Coffee with a Cop this Saturday at 67th Avenue and Thunderbird. So if you want to come by and have coffee with a cop, I will definitely be there as well. So it's a good opportunity to interact and have some conversations with the officers that are out there. Wish staff, fellow council, happy holidays. This is the last one of the year. And I also want to thank Public Safety, who will be out there while we are enjoying our holidays. Remember, they're not off on those holidays. They're out there protecting us. And I just wanted to thank you all for everything that you do. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I could just about ditto every event that they said, but I do have a couple of different things. I want to welcome the Campos family. They are our latest Habitat for Humanity family, and they live right down here in Old Town on Jefferson Street. I attended their house dedication Saturday morning. And they're just a wonderful mom with three, two high school kids and a younger boy. And they're going to be a really nice, make a nice contribution to our community. And then, the giving is not stopping with Shop with a Cop or all of the others. There's a new kid in town, a new group in town, and that is Ask Me. Eric's waving back there. The Holiday Squad is presenting a day of giving, and it's this coming Saturday. Now, that's short notice. It'll be down at the Fire Station Number One, the distillery down here in the big parking lot next door. And any needy families who might be listening, or if any of you know families that, as someone said, might not be having as great a Christmas as they should, these guys have truckloads of stuff to give away. They have not just toys, they do have toys, but they have diapers and food and pet food. And you name it, they've got it. They've got a warehouse full of items to give away. And there's no sign-in or any pre-registration. Just tell anybody you know, and this is across Peoria, to come and let their kids play. There's going to be a bounce house, there's going to be, oh, there's also going to be clothing. There's going to be a fire truck there. I think it's the old fire truck. There's going to be some big piece of equipment that these guys rumble around in, like a garbage truck or something. It's just going to be a huge, wonderful event. And it's sponsored by about 10 businesses in town also have a hand in this. So thanks to Ask Me for putting this together, and I'll be down there helping hand things out. I'm trying to find something else here that I did that they didn't. Certainly, the Community Partnership Awards. And congratulations, Meili, you very modestly did not mention yourself, but she got one. And she's just one of the remarkable young people that are being raised these days. I'm not kidding. The stuff that some of these kids accomplish, this robotic thing and what they plan to do with their life, I don't even understand what that is. The electronics stuff, the engineering stuff, it's just how they even know to want to be that. And what I think they've actually figured out is a way not to sleep, because they have so many hours of community service, and they're all in AP classes, and they all have 4.0 GPAs, and they all are in like seven volunteer groups. I really don't think they sleep. I know they don't bother their parents, because they're never home, I can tell you that. Okay, and Eric, not to be forgotten, congratulations again. You are joining a family. I think you feel that by this time, and I think you're going to be a real addition. We're going to really enjoy working with you. Also, someone mentioned, I think Bill mentioned, I met with library consultants from Main Library and tried to tell them a little about our paradigm that we live in down here in the Southern Peoria and how it's different. And they understood that. And the day of your librarian going shh, those days are gone. I don't even, do we have a librarian? Anyway, she doesn't wear glasses on the end of her nose anymore. And she's nice. And there are so many things to do at the library that really don't even have anything to do with books. Go figure. Oh, one of the fun things, I attended this last week, was Christmas with Santa over at the community center. Dusty the singing dancing horse was there. He's my favorite with his master Gary. And the senior citizens who were there, they ate pancakes provided by firefighters charities. It was just fun. They sang along with Dusty the horse. Well, okay, he didn't sing, Gary did. But it was just really, really fun. And it is so nice. They were brought in from their nursing homes on bus, and they just really, really had a good time. I want to thank Andy Granger, because there were two projects that were really important to me. One, the alleys, I'm the only district in, I think, unless Carla does, I think I'm the only district in Peoria that has alleys. And they are a real problem, because the garbage trucks don't need them anymore, so they just pile up with weeds and dirty mattresses that people throw there. They're a problem for the homeowners. And so I've been testing ideas for years. Dan Nissen will even know, he's noodled out with me some possible, well, Andy came through with a plan, and they're beautiful. They concreted down the middle and put concrete sides on, so the grass, they just look better. They give a better place to live for those communities. So thank you, Andy, after like eight years of making that happen. And you did it along with that construction on 75th Avenue, so nobody even really realized you were messing with the alleys. That was great. The other thing that I thought of, and Andy just whipped it right through, was the median over here on Monroe Street. It was a wide street. It's very beautiful now with the plantings and everything, the trees. And it separates the two lane, well, you see it when you go right out here. It's really nice. And again, it was done in a relatively short period of time. So I really appreciate Andy and the people that he works with, Adina and the others. The arts. Kathy, I just really appreciate what you said about the arts tonight. We are already a city that embraces the arts, because we embrace people, and we embrace the hearts of people. We don't just embrace the economy, although we do, or the, we embrace the souls of people, and that's where art of all kinds touches. So we're just really moving forward. I love this new art piece. I love all the public art that's in my district and other districts. And I look forward to creating a real art home, an art space in Old Town. It'll be music and dancing and festivals and places where kids can go and have art. And look at these kids tonight and the families. It just brings people together. So the planters are new downtown. They've been out for about a week, public art. They were planted just in time for, and thank you, John, for pushing that through, to get them planted before the holiday festival. Oh, that's it. Everybody, Merry Christmas. And I don't think we see them until January, do we?
No.
Okay, Happy New Year, too, then.
Right. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to tell you, I attended the Peoria Police Department Community Partnership Award. It was a great, great to see so many members of the community and surrounding cities so involved. I hope they keep this up, because it's an important event for the city of Peoria. I hope they keep this up because it's an important event for the City of Peoria. I also want to thank our First Response firefighters from Peoria to help out in California. And I come back safe, stay healthy, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you. The thing that I do want to say, and I'm going to be, as usual, the oddball. I disagree with the new Deputy City Manager. And let me tell you why. We have Katie, who's been here for many, many, many years, I don't know just how many, I've been here since 99 and I think she's been here maybe a couple of years before me or after me. But she's done a great job in the budget. She, her and the team work so hard keeping that budget in line where the council can support it. I also feel that, I don't know who this guy Strunk is, I know he's sitting over there. I understand his, I could be wrong, but I understand his wife also works here. So this is something that I disagree on. I don't know who he is, maybe the council does, I don't know who he is. And I feel bad for Katie because Katie, been here so, seen him so many years that she will never be a Deputy City Manager in Peoria. And I feel bad about that, after somebody's worked there so many years and did a great job.
Councilmember Leonie, this is a time for you to talk about events that you've done. This is not a time for you to criticize other things.
I can talk about this.
Are you, no, you can't. And we're going to move on to Youth Council Liaison Get Trust. It's not a legal question. Thank you.
I agree.
We're going to move on. Thank you.
Well, all I want to say is that, too bad, too bad about Kathy.
Youth Council Liaison, Councilmember Leonie?
I disapprove of the appointment and I would vote no. Thank you.
Youth Council Liaison?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Congratulations to all the winners once again. Eric, Jeff Zieski, Meili, and the art that was truly inspiring for me because I too love art. On December 1st, I attended the Holiday Festival. I'm not going to go into details because you guys already went into details. On December 2nd, the City of Peoria's Youth Advisory Board members volunteered at Lowe's for a light exchange event. People were able to drop off their old Christmas lights in exchange for a 10% off coupon of new Christmas LED lights to purchase at Lowe's. Our board members dressed festive for the occasion and we also held signs and waved at cars to help promote the event. I want to say thank you to those who made this event possible, the people who donated, the volunteers, and especially Lowe's. Our city in Peoria is known for having amazing parks. On Tuesday, December 5th, the Peoria Unified School District held a soccer tournament for the Unified Sports and Special Olympics programs at Pioneer Park. It was a great turnout and I was able to participate in this event and it was such a humbling experience. I would like to shine light on all of the Unified Pride programs that Peoria has because together we are able. On Saturday, December 9th, our main Peoria Public Library hosted an Elf on the Shelf event. There was arts and crafts along with cookie decorating for the youth to do. The cookies looked like reindeers and ornaments and they were also a very delicious treat afterwards. I would like to thank the Peoria Public's Main Library for hosting this event. Right now, there are a lot of wildfires happening in California, so I would just like to say that my thoughts and prayers go out to them in hopes that they are able to contain these wildfires soon. I too also send my condolences to the City of El Mirage. Lastly, it is the holiday season and I just want to let everyone know, Happy Holidays, and to continue to show the random acts of kindness because here in the City of Peoria, we always care for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. I have very little else to add to such a great, a great ending to the year. We have really done so many things and accomplished so much this year. Thank you to all of our city staff. Welcome to our new Deputy City Manager, we're very happy to have you here. And we're just gearing up and getting ready for another year. So I wish all of our citizens a healthy, happy holiday season and New Year and we will see you back here in just a couple more weeks. So thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.